He served as Vice Mayor in 2014, 2018, and 2020, and elected mayor in 2020. And whereas during his service as mayor, Bob took a strategic approach to skillfully managing the city's business while collaboratively, collaboratively working with fellow council members and staff to define and achieve objectives. He ensured the city remained fiscally strong by addressing the OPEV hundred million dollar unfunded liability, building back the reserves faster into a higher level after the Great Recession, and focusing attention on the asset management funding gap. Bob successfully navigated the turbulent social issues and the unique challenges presented by the pandemic. He promptly made resources available to help residents and businesses survive the impacts of the emergency rules. Bob also helped concerned community members work with the city council and staff to achieve their goals to improve Livermore by working to preserve Tesla Park as open space and passing anti-vaping and safe gun storage ordinances. And whereas Bob brought together a broad array of community groups to successfully advocate for the approved downtown plan, he structured the Stockman's Park Agreement, which simultaneously freed up land for senior housing and fulfilled the city's longstanding commitment to the Livermore Stockman's Rodeo Association with a downtown park. He also worked tirelessly to expand Blacksmith Square and to transfer parcels to development partners. And whereas Bob attributes much of his success as mayor and council member to the continued support and observation over the years of his wife Nova, whose own suggestions such as installing white lights year-round on the trees in the downtown and imprinting Livermore ranching brands in the pavement around the statue in Stockman's Park have left a mark on the city. After leaving the city council, Bob plans to relax and enjoy life, spend more time with Nova and family, reconnect with old friends, and take up some of his neglected hobbies, including sailing. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Livermore thanks Bob Warner for his dedicated service and contributions to the Livermore community and wishes his well in his future endeavors. And with that, I will thank you both for your service and turn it back to you, Mayor Warner.
Okay, thank you very much for reading those for us. And we're now on to item three dot two, which is proclamations for departing city council members from Senator Glazier. And this is a pre-recorded video sent by the senator and will be played by the city clerk now.
Mr. Mayor, we still have one final item for item three point one.
Oh, it's all three one, okay.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is U.C. manager Mariana Marashova. We do have an additional video presentation under item three point one that we would like to play.
Thank you, Mayor Warner, Vice Mayor Banano, and Councilmember Monroe for your strategic leadership and service to our community.
Thank you for supporting our mini-community engagement programs.
Thank you so much for your commitment to supporting businesses, especially during the pandemic.
Thank you for prioritizing public safety.
Thank you for looking out for the community's best interests.
Thank you for championing the downtown plan and all the amazing projects that are in it.
Thank you for prioritizing the financial health and sustainability of the city.
Thank you for your leadership around the city's work on diversity, equity, and inclusion.
And thank you for advocating for the city's needs at the state and federal levels.
Thank you for continuing to innovate and find solutions to address homelessness in Livermore.
Thank you for your service in this community.
Thank you for your direction and support on the Climate Action Plan. We're really looking forward to implementing it.
Thank you for looking out for the organization's needs.
Thank you for making housing and human services a priority in the city and supporting our local human services providers. We couldn't do it without you.
Thank you for your contributions to our great city.
Thank you for your leadership during the pandemic.
On behalf of the Livermore Pleasant and Fire Department, we'd like to thank the Livermore City Council for your dedication to the cities of Livermore and the Livermore Pleasant and Fire Department. Thank you for your service and your continued support.
Mr. Mayor, thank you so much for allowing us.
Okay, well, thank you, and I missed that. That was very nice videos. I really appreciate it. And so now that was ends three dot one, we're on to three dot two. Is that correct?
Yes, please.
Okay, we're on to. So thank you for that video and the other proclamation. So three dot two is proclamations for this departing city council members from Senator Glazier. And could the city clerk please replay that?
Hello, Bob, Trish, and Gina. I want to congratulate you all for your wonderful years of service to Livermore. Your great passion for our community is commendable. I've enjoyed all of our meetings, our visits at events. I hope that we can continue to stay in touch in the years ahead. Congratulations and thank you again for your exceptional service to the people of Livermore.
Okay, thank you. Really appreciate having gotten to know Senator Glazier over the years and working with him. So now we're on to three dot three, proclamations for the departing city council members from Supervisor Hubbard.
Mayor Warner, if you could go to the public, I would just give me one more minute. I'll speak after the next one, maybe. Would that be okay?
Oh, sure, sure. So we'll go to, let me get this. What we've got a name for it, the open forum. And that's good to see. Clerk, please explain the process for participating in tonight's meeting.
Yes, Mayor. The city council's agenda provides opportunities for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the city council in the following ways. First, for non-agenda items, the public has the opportunity during open forum to address the city council on any item of interest that is within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction. Second, for agenda items, the public can address the city council on each item of business it considers when the mayor opened the open forum and should be focused on that particular item. Please note, the speaker is not required to answer any questions from the city council, and the city council is not required to answer any questions from the public. However, the mayor has discretion to ask staff to direct the speaker's comments when a council member believes it is relevant to a particular business item. When participating in this portion of tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person, per item. Members of the public can participate by using the raise hand feature or star nine to call in when the item begins. These do not wait until the public, until the open forum period opens for each item to raise your hand. Instead, raise your hand now. Once open forum opens, each participant's name will be announced in three minutes will begin on being unmuted. The mayor will announce the conclusion of the open forum period after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We normally just repeated go for the first, you know, for a half hour on this and any spillovers picked up later in the meeting. So we're starting at seven twenty. So we'll go to seven fifty if necessary. But good to city clerk, please begin the process. Thank you.
Our speaker is Alan Marling, followed by Lori Sousa and Aiden Sidum. Alan Marling, please unmute yourself.
Mayor Warner, Councilmembers Monroe and Banano, thank you for your work, in particular for the planned improvements to downtown. I'm excited to see the upcoming theater hotel upgrades to Blacksmith Square and new affordable housing. Not only will this housing help address California's housing crisis, but I'm beginning to appreciate the advantages of city density. Urban density reduces the reliance on car infrastructure, making public parking and public transportation more practical. With everything from the train to supermarkets within walking distance, people can save additional money by not owning a car. This reduces congestion and parking woes. Also, it will help the city meet its climate action goals. Housing justice and environmental justice go hand in hand, and affordable housing will give Livermore workers the security and peace of mind, in turn allowing them to better serve their community. Happy workers improve the lot of everyone, and with more time and money in their pockets, they will be able to enjoy local businesses helping them flourish. Livermore grew up around the railroad, and there is nowhere better to develop than within walking distance of trains. Thank you.
Next speaker is Lori Sousa, followed by Aiden Sidum and Mel Chong. Lori Sousa, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mayor Warner, city council members and staff. You know, I've lived here for over forty years. I just want to take this opportunity to thank you for your dedication and service to the city of Livermore. I know there are thousands of residents who would agree with me that your leadership has made a significant contribution to Livermore's well-being. It's fair to say these last few years have been exceptionally difficult, and there was no roadmap to refer to. None of us had prior experience with anything like the impacts of the pandemic. It touched every aspect of our lives. Your diligent and careful governance helped many in countless ways. We're very grateful. Thank you.
The next speaker is Aiden Sidum, followed by Mel Chong and Katie Keishen. Aiden Sidum, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mayor Warner, city council members, city staff. I'd like to use my comment tonight to tell you a story. About two and a half years ago, I was a Grenada student with no political experience, and I just turned sixteen. With COVID-19 raging and the 2020 election ramping up nationwide, I decided to get involved locally to chip in whatever I could to improve the community where I've spent the better part of my life. It started with an email to Bob Warner's campaign expressing my support and asking how I could help. That email was answered by Evan Branding soon after. Evan and Bob took a chance on me and welcomed me to the campaign with open arms. And in the months that followed, I worked under their guidance to exercise my full potential and help Bob win in all the ways that I knew how. During my first virtual campaign meeting, I was introduced to Brittany Kick and Gina Banano, who both sat on Bob's campaign committee. Brittany departed the committee soon after to focus on her own race for city council, and I was lucky to work with both Bob and Gina and the rest of the team on many projects throughout the election season. And the first thing I did as a member of Bob's campaign team was to call Trish Monroe to ask her to endorse Bob. Of course, I hadn't done my research, and so I was unaware that Trish had already endorsed Bob, and it made for quite an embarrassing moment for me. But it was the first of many phone calls with Trish, and it kicked off a relationship that had guided me through local politics and taught me a lot over these past two years. So fast forward to today, and I find myself feeling nothing but gratitude. I'm grateful to Mayor Warner for taking a chance on me and for his guidance and mentorship over the past two years. I'm grateful to Councilmember Monroe for her friendship and guidance over these past two years, for without her, I would not have had many of the opportunities that I've been presented with. I'm grateful to Vice Mayor Banano for her guidance and for her many years of service to this city. I'm grateful to Councilmember Kick for her friendship and for believing in me, but I didn't think many people did. And of course, I'm grateful to my friend, Councilmember-elect Branding, for everything he's done, but I cannot possibly name the time that I've left. And I know that he will be a phenomenal city council member. My many thanks to Mayor Warner, Councilmember Monroe, and Vice Mayor Banano for their leadership and service to the city. And my many congratulations and well wishes to our soon-to-be Mayor Marchand, Councilmember Branding, and Councilmember Bariantos. I look forward to working with our new city council members to develop our downtown area, build more affordable housing, install more public art, and make substantial improvements to the city so future generations can enjoy it. Livermore is an incredible community, and it will continue to be an incredible community because these people stepped up to lead it. Thank you.
Next speaker is Mel Chong, followed by Katie Keishen and Dave McQuaiden. Mel Chong, please unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. And I just wanted to say thank you to the whole council, to the entire city council, in particular tonight, to outgoing Mayor, Mayor Bob Warner, Vice Mayor Gina Banano, and Councilmember Trish Monroe. For myself, having gone through the campaign period, I definitely understand what you've been through and what you have done for the city. So again, my gratitude for all your service, your commitment, and your dedication to the city of Livermore and to all the residents of Livermore. And in the same light, I would like to congratulate the incoming members of the council, Mayor John Marchand, and council members Evan Brock-Branding and Ben Bariantos. Best wishes to everyone. Thank you so much.
Next speaker is Katie Keishen, followed by Dave McQuaiden and Alan Vernon. Katie Keishen, please unmute yourself.
Hey there. My name is Katie Keishen. I am a field representative for Assemblymember Rebecca Bauer-Kahan, and I am here on her behalf tonight to say thank you to Mayor Warner, Vice Mayor Banano, and Councilmember Monroe. All three of you have been incredible leaders, and the assembly member wishes she could, you know, be here tonight, but she wanted to extend her profound gratitude for the service that you have given to the city. You, yeah, you all three, all three of you have been incredible. She has been grateful for the partnership and the opportunity to work with you. You know, as you make the transition beyond this, you know, we know that all three of you will continue to serve our city and our communities in meaningful ways, and we're grateful for that. Your leaders and I think all the comments tonight are testaments to the ways in which you have impacted this city and this community. Thank you so much. We have certificates of recognition for you. I will bring them to the city offices to say thank you, and congratulations to the new members of council as well.
Next speaker is Dave McQuaiden and Alan Vernon. Dave McQuaiden, please unmute yourself.
Yeah, I just want to point out that it's a really good look that the only council member who could make it to the chamber and no disparaging, but one in the wheelchair. Really good look going on there. Thank you.
The next speaker is Tom Vernon. Could I mute yourself?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Last week, the National Ignition Facility achieved ignition, meaning it generated more energy than than the the light that was impinged on the capsule. And why am I bringing this up? Because three of the out, the three outgoing council members all have close ties to the laser fusion effort. We heard in the proclamations those of Mayor Warner and Councilmember Banano, and also Trish Monroe is married to a physicist who worked on that. And I think this is a, an amazing time when three council members have close ties to such a huge scientific accomplishment in really the history of the world. So I would like to congratulate all of, all of you three for your contributions, not only to the city, but also to the, the, this monumental accomplishment.
Mayors, are there no more requests to speak?
Hey, I'll close the public forum and come back to, let's see if I get the number right, three dot three for Supervisor Hubbard's proclamation.
Yes, thank you, Bob, Mayor Warner. First of all, I have to commend the Livermore staff for the thorough research that they conducted. Every single point that they raised is covered in the proclamations that my staff will be delivering to you that you'll have for you to hang on your wall. But let me just take a moment and also to congratulate staff. The heartfelt messages in their video of farewell to each of you just speaks volumes of what a great community Livermore is. And now, great communities are not made overnight, and they don't happen by accident. They're made by good leaders like each of you. And while I won't regale all of the points made, let me just say I found it very interesting that they slipped in how fortuitous it was and what a great decision for Councilmember Monroe to move from Pleasanton to Livermore. Great idea. And Bob, I didn't know that you met your wife at, what is it, a tango dance? That's really cool. And Commissioner, Vice Mayor Banano, photography in your future. I did not know you were such a great photographer. I want to thank each of you. Trish, I know that you, through all the times, the years that I've known you, always fighting for diversity, equity, and inclusion, and always speaking up for the points of view that need to be heard. Gina, for your service that I know you most closely on is our work together on LAFTA, Livermore Amter Valley Transportation Authority. And the great questions that you ask and the homework that it's evident that you do each and every meeting, and the thoroughness for which you came in, in an appointment, served an amount of time that you had fresh legs the entire time, all the way to the end. Thank you, not the least of which bringing on a new executive director for LAFTA was not an easy task. And Mayor Warner, your critical thinking, your strategic thinking, the, the questions that you ask, it's no doubt that you're all scientists, but Bob, for your leadership in continuing to make sure that Livermore was represented on the Alameda County Conference of Mayors and on the various regional boards that you and I sit on together, LaFco, Valley Link, ACTC, just an amazing, amazing individual. You will all have been treasured by the Livermore community for what you've done. You will all be missed. That said, you're being replaced by very capable people, and they will be recognized as incoming in their own way. I just bid you all today farewell and congratulate you. Thank you. And to say, let's continue to work together. You're still part of the community. You can't go too far. And thank you again for your service.
Oh, thank you so much, Supervisor, for your kind words and recognition of the breadth of what we deal with. So very much appreciated. So I think myself and others have appreciated working with you and Senator Glazier and Assemblymember Bauer-Kahan. I think all of you are doing a great job for us, and it's been a pleasure working with you. And I'm sure, as you said, the ones who follow behind us will do a great job as well. So thank you so much. We're now on to the consent calendar, item five dot O. And consent calendar items are considered routine in nature and are acted upon by the city council with a single action. Members of the audience wishing to provide public input must use the raised hand feature during the public comment period to comment, comment on any of the consent calendar items. And I'd just like to point out that the public comment is for the entire consent calendar is limited to three minutes in total, independent of the number of items that somebody wishes to comment on. At this point, I'd like to mention that we're going to pull item five dot two for separate discussion and vote. Would any other council member like to, would any council member like to pull any other items for a separate discussion? Okay, I don't see any. So with that, I would open it up now for public comments on any item on the entire consent calendar.
The next speaker is Rihanna Bradford, followed by Donna Caban and Rebecca. Rihanna Bradford, please unmute yourself.
Good evening. My name is Rihanna Bradford, and I'm the CFO for Livermore Valley Arts. I'm commenting on item five dot eleven, the host community impact fee. I just want to thank the city council for a complete accounting of the HCF funds that is very helpful to me and to the Livermore Valley Arts Organization. And I also want to thank the city council and the city staff for their continued support of the Bankhead Theater.
Next speaker is Donna Caban, followed by Jeff Caskey. Donna Caban, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, city council members, Donna Caban, Livermore resident. Thank you for including, I also want to speak on five point eleven. Thank you for including the update on the host fee that was a result of the settlement agreement in nineteen ninety-six. As one of several negotiators involved in the settlement agreement, I would like to clarify a few points in the consultant's update. Number one, the report states that the VASCO landfill will close in twenty twenty-four. This is incorrect. As far as I know, the landfill asked for and received a one-time vertical extension that would allow the landfill, the VASCO landfill, to remain open until twenty fifty-one. A negative declaration was filed in June twenty twenty-two. Number two, the report states that such cities as San Jose or cities in San Joaquin may use the landfill in the future. That is also incorrect. Once phase two of the landfill opened this year, the settlement agreement precludes any cities outside of Alameda County except for San Francisco and San Ramon to landfill municipal solid waste at the Altamont. The Altamont could receive a limited amount of special waste from the nine-day area counties, but not municipal solid waste. Number three, due to new state recycling mandates and zero-waste goals, green waste, food waste, appliances, et cetera, can no longer be landfilled. Therefore, these items, about twenty percent of the waste stream, will not generate tipping fee for the host fee revenue. Please refer to page ten of ten of the consultant's report. Number one, at the top of the page says the projected host fee revenue will be about thirteen point three million for the projected period from twenty twelve through twenty forty-one, less than the projections of eighteen point one million. And then it's confusing because the paragraph right under it, it says, based on the information assumptions and conditions set forth in this report, it is H and S's opinion that it is reasonable to believe the city of Livermore will receive eighteen point million in host fee revenue between twenty twelve and twenty forty-one. I realize these are projections, but based on the one, the last, the VASCO landfill extension, two, legal restrictions in the settlement agreement that reduce host fees, and three, new recycling mandates, a lower host fee of thirteen point three million is much more likely to occur in the future. And hope that these new figures will be included in upcoming updates. Thank you so much. Bye-bye.
Next speaker is Jeff Caskey, followed by Alan Marling. Jeff Caskey, please unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening, council and staff. I'm addressing item five dot two. I have concerns about the principle of creating an ordinance that is so impractical that its main purpose, as described by the council members proposing it at the last meeting, is to do something so that the next council has to correct it. We've heard from real estate agents about how they find this is going to be impractical. Driving around town, seeing signage, you can see that churches, yard sailors, others are going to have similar problems. Not to mention the political signs that I assume was actually the original reason that the that the ordinance was drafted. I applaud the two members of council who previously voted against it. I under, I recall that another member of council was fairly strongly undecided, so I am glad to see that you are bringing this to a vote again. I think the principle of bringing up an ordinance for the purpose of tasking the next council with fixing it seems an odd precedent to set. Thank you very much. I do thank this council very much for their service. Appreciate the opportunity to interact with the city and staff, and I'm looking forward to working with our next council. Thank you.
Last speaker is Alan Marling. Please unmute yourself.
Mayor and council members, I thank you for putting forward this ordinance, oh, this is five dot two, this ordinance on signs. And I understand it may have some side effects, but in practice, I think those downsides will be, will be mitigated, and any disadvantages can be eased through online advertising in communities such as Nextdoor. I believe the simple and straightforward language of this bill is best and most defensible in court. Now let's not lose sight of the necessity of this bill, which may address the blight of campaign sites. And please do remember all the citizens who spoke about the, how irritating these signs were, and it's best that we address this now when that is fresh in our memory. Thank you.
Mayor, there are no more, there is one more request to speak.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I'll close a public comment on the consent calendar. And before I ask for a motion on everything other than five two, I would ask staff, given that all that was said about five eleven, do we need to make any modification to it before passing? given that all that was said about five eleven, do we need to make any modification to it before passing it?
Excuse me, Mayor, we have one additional speaker.
Pardon?
We have one additional speaker.
I, I couldn't hear what you said. Are you not hearing me?
We can hear you, Mayor. We have one additional speaker.
Oh, one additional speaker. Oh, of course. I'll reopen it.
The next speaker is Carl Wenti. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Carl Wenti. I apologize for the technical difficulties there making this happen and I apologize. This is in regards to the entirety of the consent calendar. And I would have rather delivered this in the open forum, but I will stay on the consent calendar as is how much government happens and just the appreciation for the city staff that we have for listening, for being part of our community. Again, I always, always thank those upon bulletproof vests to go to work. Salute you. Those keep us safe. Those will wear a badge. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Mr. Mayor, City Council, I got patchiness of a lot of the kind words that were said to Mr. Mayor, but the incredible education that you have, the incredible like history of service that you have is so appreciated. I love the Manova Tango dancing and successfully negotiate, successfully collaborate, successfully brought people together. So let's just say a thank you to Mr. Mayor for the work you did on this consent calendar to make sure I stay on topic. You are very much appreciated. I have learned a lot from your openness, your willingness, your care for community is so awesome. Ms. Gina Bonano, you two have been a great part of our community and thank you for what you did for this consent calendar here today. To stay on topic again, Mr. Alcala, I'm trying. I appreciation, 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 appreciation to you both. Take care. Namaste. Be well.
Mayor, there are no more requests to speak.
Mr. Mayor, this is U C manager Mariana Marsh. In response to your last question, item five eleven, we do not need to make any corrections to the item. This item is for the council to accept the staff's projections. Should those projections need to be revised in future years, we will just, thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, I would ask, bring it back to council and can I get a motion on the consent calendar excluding five dot two? Councilmember Monroe.
I so move the consent calendar excluding five dot two.
Vice Mayor Bonano.
Second.
Okay, moved in second and I don't see any further discussion. Do we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Councilmember Kate.
Hi.
Councilmember Monroe.
Hi.
Next Mayor Bonano.
Hi.
Mayor Warner.
I, it all passes unanimously, unanimously other than five dot two. We're now on to five dot two. Would someone like to make a motion on five dot two?
I'll move approval.
Okay, and Councilmember Monroe.
I second.
Okay, now bring it back, moved in seconded. Any further discussion on this item? That we haven't heard before? So anyway, it's opportunity. I don't see any. All right, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Carling.
No.
Councilmember Kate.
Yes.
Councilmember Monroe.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bonano.
No.
Mayor Warner.
Yes, passes three dot two. Thank you. We're on to, we have no public hearings and now we're on to, I would, one of the main events is the resolution accepting the canvas of voters for the November eighth, twenty twenty two general municipal election and ordinance adopting measure P approved by the voters. Give us a presentation, please.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. This is Murray Weber, your city clerk. On November eighth, a general municipal election was held in Livermore to elect a mayor to council members and put an initiative before the voters. The Alameda County registrar voters has certified the election results and provided a copy of the official canvas to the city. This, the elections code requires that the city elections official certify the election results to the governing body, which shall declare the result of the election and adopt the resolution reciting the fact of the election before installing new officers and adopting the ordinance approved by the voters. The following persons are elected to their respective offices for the term stated until their successors are duly elected and qualified. John Marchand to the office of mayor for a two-year term. Evan Branning to the office of city council member, district one, for a four-year term. And Ben Bariantos to the office of council member, district two, for a four-year term. Measure P, amending the city of Livermore's South Livermore Urban Growth Boundary Policies to allow the city to extend sewer services to properties outside the South Livermore Urban Growth Boundary for uses permitted by Alameda County's South Livermore Valley Area Plan was also approved by the voters. Tonight, staff recommends the city council adopt a resolution accepting the canvas of votes as certified by the Alameda County registrar voters for the November eighth, twenty twenty two general municipal election and adopt the ordinance approved by the voters as measure P. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Thank you. At this point, I'll open the public comment on seven dot O. Do we have anybody who wishes to address us?
Yes, Mayor, there is one request to speak. Carl Wenti, please unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Carl Wenti, five generations in Livermore. Again, want to say thank you to Mr. Mayor, City Council, what you do. Thank you, city staff. And thank you to all, all those that voted. And may we aspire to continually get a higher percentage turnout of those that vote. This is the most pristine poll, polling system that we have and we're still don't get nearly enough people out to the polls. So let's continue to work on getting out the vote. This matters. This is how democracy works. It's how our democratic republic works and thank you all for what you do.
Next speaker is Aethis Shab. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you for spending the time going over all these details. I just want to say a quick thank you because I didn't get a chance earlier to thank all of those who have serving, who will be no longer serving. Mayor Warner, Councilmember Bonano, Councilmember Monroe, thank you for your diligent service over the years. I want to congratulate those who did win, who are going to be coming in. Mayor-elect Marchand, Councilmember-elect Branning, and then Council-elect Bariantos, looking forward to working with you over the next couple of years. Really excited. And I'm not going to repeat everything else that everyone else said, but you know, my message is for this one is mostly to those who ran that didn't win. Thank you for putting your hat in the ring. It creates a more robust conversation and we're most robust democracy when we have people within our community who are willing to step up. It's not easy. I've done it. I didn't win. It sucks when you lose. So I just want to say to those who did put their hands in, who didn't win, thank you and good luck and keep your head up.
Mayor, there are no more requests to speak.
Okay, I'll close public comment on this item. And we'll now bring it back to the council. We can do a motion in second and then we can discuss it if we need to. I have a motion for approval. Councilmember.
Yes.
Carling, you moved. Thank you. And Vice Mayor Bonano.
Second.
Okay, moved in seconded. Anybody wish to discuss this item before we vote? There will be a opportunity after this to for us to have some parting comment. So, okay, I moved in seconded. No further comment. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Councilmember Kate.
Yes.
Councilmember Monroe.
Hi.
Next Mayor Bonano.
Hi.
Mayor Warner.
I passes unanimously. So I'd like to say thanks to everyone who participated in the election. And I just want to say I very much enjoyed working with the this council and all the previous ones I've had the privilege of collaborating with. It's, we've taken quite a professional approach to getting the city's business done. And now that we've just certified results for the next council, I'm confident that the next one will continue the tradition of cooperation we have here in Livermore. So best of luck to all of you that are like myself that are departing and wish you the best, all of you that are joining the council. So thank you. Anybody else wish to say anything? Vice Mayor Bonano.
Yeah, thank you. I just have a couple, couple remarks. A little bit overwhelming to hear all the kind words this evening and sometime, sometime in the past twenty years that I've lived here, this town became my hometown and it's really the first place I really set my roots. So being able to serve on the city council in what I consider my hometown has really been an extreme honor and been very, very grateful for the opportunity. I just want to thank first my colleagues, my fellow council members, all of you have been incredibly influential in my time on the council and prior to that, in many cases, I've learned from all of you and it's, it's been a real privilege to serve with all of you. I think we've done really good work together and I know the new council will, will do the same. Mayor Warner, you've been an extraordinary leader of this council and of the city in your many, many years of service. I think you've led us with integrity, skill and just an extreme dedication to making this community everything it can be and to, and to serving the citizens. So I, I so appreciate that. And your friendship and your mentorship as well to our city staff who I've had the privilege of working with closely since I joined the planning commission in twenty fourteen. I have heard time and time and time again in those years, those eight years from applicants, from citizens, from elected officials from other cities, just how wonderful our staff is to work with, how creative they are, how talented are they are, you are, and how dedicated you are. And it's just been just extremely gratifying to have worked with some young, early career engineers and planning and planning city planners early in your career when I started in twenty fourteen and now you are becoming the emerging leaders of our city staff. And that's been a real pleasure to watch and very satisfying. And I just know you guys are all going to continue doing such great work and it's, it's something, working with you is going to be something I miss tremendously. And finally, I want to thank the community for always showing up, even when you don't agree with us, which, which happens fairly frequently. But I think that it's the only way that we really keep. That's part of the checks and balances. It, it makes sure we're doing the job we were elected to do, which is to serve the community and to represent you. And I've always appreciated the seriousness of this community. How seriously you all take what we do and how much you're dedicated to your community. And I know you all continue to do that. I'll miss this job a lot. I probably don't even realize right now how much I'm going to miss it, but I will. And I just want to thank you and, and wish the new council the very best. And I think I'll just, I'll leave it there and turn it over to someone else.
Councilmember Monroe.
I'll start with a big thank you to staff. I hadn't, the, as, as I've said often, the key to the city is what inspired me to start with. And with the dedication of staff, that dedication, my observation of that dedication and my privilege of working with such a dedicated staff has only grown. Mayor Warner, I remember that time in twenty eighteen when I came over to learn from you and you said, so why don't you run for office? And I said, what? And here we are, four years later. So I want to thank you for reaching out. It does take the reaching out to the next, the next generation, the next generation, and we have seen that, that, that go forward. Bob Carling, Councilmember Carling, I have had such a good time getting to know somebody with such a different style than I have and really appreciating your kindness, your caring, and your willingness to just say, this is what I feel and I'm going to stick with it. It's been a real pleasure. Vice Mayor Bonano, Gina, I think I still know you the least, but I look forward to knowing you better. I so admire your ability to just stay organized, something that I struggle with. And Councilmember Kick, you know, I know where you live. So I, I count on you to carry forward some of the projects we've started together. As I think about the community, of course, I, very early on in my council experience, I, I added a tagline which has served me well with two pieces to it. One is everything is, takes longer, is more complicated and will cost more than you expect. Do it anyway. I think if we all think through our lives, that has been, I cannot think of anything in my life that that has, has not been the case for. From raising children to going to school to being on council to whatever. Hang on to that. And we're not, we're all the heroes we could be, but we can't be heroes alone. So be heroes together. Let us be heroes together. And to the incoming council, just remember, it takes three. It's okay to just have three. It's okay to disagree productively, but you gotta have three. Thank you all. It's been a wild ride and a great privilege.
Councilmember Kick.
I have lots to say, but in the spirit of time and learning lessons from Mayor Warner and efficiency, I'll save those for other conversations later. I, I have said that there are many leaders who don't seek election. And there are, in my maybe controversial opinion, many elected are not true leaders. And I think we've been really lucky that the three of you that are leaving us were both elected and community leaders at the same time and that's special, but that doesn't really mean anything because just because you're not elected anymore, that doesn't mean you're not still community leaders. So I think that we are lucky to still have you and I'm looking forward to working with you in different ways. And if anything, I think it makes my life less stressful because when I talk to each of you on any given day, I don't have to think, who else did I talk to today? We got to make sure we don't have any Brown Act violations. Because I just enjoy learning from, from each of you so much and, and the, the different ways that you've contributed to my life. And I do promise to continue to extend the invitation from Warner to Monroe to I. So to the public that's listening, let me know who wants to be invited in to continue to participate in, in our community. Thank you for, thank you for your time and for all that you've taught me. And I promise I'll do my best to, to both and, and be efficient.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Carling.
Yes, thank you. It's a little odd. I have an audience in front of me here that I, seems like I should be speaking to, but on the other hand, you guys are all on the screen. So it just seems a little odd. So to each of you, I think I have some important, well, I think are important words. Thanks. Trish, I'll start with you. We served on a couple of different subcommittees, both on, for the Unsheltered and on E and I. And I think this community has made real strides in both of those areas. I, you know, I think I was participated in a housing workshop last week and one of the things that was remarked there by Josh Thurman was that the number of unsheltered in our community has, has gone down since the last point in time count. Whereas the county of Alameda has gone up substantially. So I think that the work that you and I shared and worked with city staff to to deal with the unsheltered population in our community has really paid dividends. So I appreciate your partnership on that. Also, in E and I, following the death of George Floyd, I think you and I spent many, many hours working with those subgroups on the E and I larger committee and I, and every one of those groups prepared material that we, the city or others within our community can move forward to address equity and inclusion in a more comprehensive way in our community. So I appreciate your dedication on both of those subcommittees and working very closely with me on those. So Gina, I think I first got to know you better when you were on the downtown steering committee that I co-chaired with the mayor. And again, appreciate your work on the planning commission. And subsequently, when you got appointed to city council, our work together on the climate action plan. Again, I enjoyed the commitment and the dedication and your perspective on moving that forward. I think between the two of us, I think we made a much better document for our community to, to embrace. And again, your dedication to that was certainly heartfelt and I appreciate the opportunity working with you on that. Mayor Warner, you are a council member, you and I were council members when I first joined council in twenty seventeen. We were appointed to the downtown. We were appointed to the downtown steering committee by then Mayor Marshawn, and I appreciated the opportunity of getting to know you better and working collectively, collaboratively with you. The nineteen members of the steering committee that we tried to uh corral into a meaningful discussion and, and path forward. I think we did all that. And I think we, in uh, January of 2018, passed a uh, a downtown plan that was embraced by all members of the council. And we've been implementing that uh in the years since then and moving forward. So I appreciate your leadership. More recently, as mayor, um, I appreciate the opportunity of working directly with you and and all the phone calls. I mean, there were many times during the week that we would talk several times uh, on, on the phone, uh, thinking about how we were gonna better organize not only our meetings, but also how we could better engage the public and move the city forward. So again, I appreciate your dedication to efficiency and focusing on those things that are important to this community at large. So again, I want to thank each of you for the opportunity, the privilege of working with you. I look forward to working with the, with the Councilmember Kick as we uh invite the new members to join us here moving forward in the, in 2022 and beyond. So thanks again.
Okay, uh, thank all of you. And I'll just reiterate we, what we said on our uh reception last Thursday. All of this, and it was mentioned again tonight, all of what's been done was uh based on the fantastic staff work. And we have a wonderful staff. And that's what also gives me confidence that we're going to continue to move forward. So we're now on to um, adjournment. Let's see, it means today. We're, so we're not going anywhere. And now we're turning it over to uh the staff to administer the oath of, oath of office. To uh, John Marshand is mayor, Evan Branning, District One, Ben Bariantos is District Two. So can we uh proceed with that uh oath of office? Thank you. And then we'll have a 10-minute break to seat the new members. And we'll have another council meeting.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear
That I will bear.
True faith and allegiance.
True faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Okay, uh, I guess I'll just mention, we had a 10-minute break and it really is fantastic to see how we uh transfer uh, you know, power. So it's wonderful. So 10-minute break and then uh, next on, uh, next up is uh, John Marshawn.
That's right.
TV thirty, do you need to have the council members back in?
Hello, this is Mike with TV thirty, are we ready to start?
Yes.
All right. And five, four, three, two, one.
All right, it's showtime. I will now call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
House member Brandon.
Here.
House member Carly.
Here.
House member Kik.
Here.
Here. Okay, now we have the, I guess, is there a presentation for the oncoming council members?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is your city manager, Mariana Mardesha, but we do have a video presentation under item eleven point.
Hello, I'm your city manager, Mariana Mardesha.
And I'm your city attorney, Jason Alcala.
Welcome, Mayor Mardesha and council members Branning and Bariantos to our city organization. We're happy you'll be joining council members Carling and Kik to serve this community, guide our organization, and set the policies that will ensure the Livermore community receives quality services and programs.
As your city attorney and your city manager, the two of us look forward to helping you define your goals and to achieve your collective vision for the Livermore community. With that direction, we can then help work to develop and implement the steps to achieve them for you.
Our entire executive team is looking forward to working with you all on many important ventures, such as finalizing our new strategic plan, rolling out the climate action plan, furthering the Isabel neighborhood specific plan, and much more. Thank you for joining us.
Hi, I'm Paul Spence, the Director of Community Development, and I'm looking forward to working with you on our general plan update and our housing element.
Hello, my name is Anwan Baker, your Library Services Director, and with our combined focus and efforts, we will inspire growth, enhance quality of life, and build community in this great city.
Hi, I'm Tina Olson, I'm your Administrative Services Director. I'm looking forward to working with you as we continue to modernize the city's systems and balance the city's budget.
Hello, my name's Jeremy Young, and I'm Livermore's Police Chief. I look forward to working with each of you on our shared goals of public safety.
Hi, I'm Scott Lanfear, Director of Public Works. Welcome to City Council. We look forward to working with you on a lot of the important things Public Works is doing for the city, such as asset management, streets and sidewalks, and facilities and airports.
Hi, I'm Christine Martin, your Assistant City Manager. I wanted to extend a warm welcome and let you know that I'm very much looking forward to working with you and making continued progress on our emergency management program and our communication strategy.
Hi, I'm Brandon Cardwell, you're Director of Innovation and Economic Development, and I'm most looking forward to working with you to complete the downtown, revitalize our wine country, and grow our local innovation economy to provide opportunity and quality of life for residents and visitors to the city of Livermore.
Hi, I'm Joe Testa, Fire Chief of the Livermore Pleasant and Fire Department Joint Powers Authority. I'm excited to work with you, the new council, on the following three priority items. First, we've just launched a diversity, equity, and inclusion study that's going to result in a strategy. Second, we're going to be conducting a community risk assessment, taking a look at our current deployment and future needs for the Livermore Pleasant and Fire Department to continue the high level of service that we provide. And third, we're going to continue working on EMS transport in Alameda County, where we've had a struggle with response times over recent years. Again, welcome and thank you.
Mayor Mardesha and council members Bariantos and Branning, welcome again. And to council members Carling and Kik, thank you for transitioning with us and providing continuity as we continue to work on a number of significant matters and projects. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. So now we go to item number twelve, back to another open forum. We don't, we already had the earlier presentation, so we didn't go through that again. Do we have any comments for the open forum?
Yes, Mayor, there are three requests to speak. Alan Marley, followed by Dave McWigan and Carol Silva. Alan Marley, please unmute yourself.
Mayor and council members, today it was widely reported that the Lawrence Livermore National Laboratory will announce an energy net positive fusion. This is exciting because fusion has the potential to produce infinite clean energy. Scientists have labored, labored over this problem for decades, including our departing mayor, vice mayor, and council members partner. I wish to thank and honor each who has contributed. Even if the results of the successful fusion are not ultimately reproducible, we were right to strive for it, for what might well prove to be the greatest scientific advancement since mankind's use of fire. Everyone who works or has worked at the local labs has my deepest respect and gratitude. I trust the city council will continue to recognize their achievements.
Next speaker is Dave McWigan, followed by Carol Silva. Dave McWigan, please unmute yourself.
Welcome back, Johnny. You can lie, but you can't hide.
Next speaker is Carol Silva, followed by Carl Wentey. Carol Silva, please unmute yourself.
Hi, I just want to congratulate the new members of the council and the mayor. And I do want to thank Ben Bariantos. It was a pleasure to get to know him. He's a kind and intelligent man. And anyway, I just wish the, the new city council with a couple of the, with Mr. Carling and Ms. Kirk, I wish them all the best, and I hope that they also listen to opposing views. Again, I want to thank you for your service. I know campaigning is hard, and I congratulate you, and also I think it's important to also acknowledge the people who did not win, who also campaigned and put in a hard fight. Thank you for listening to me.
Next speaker is Carl Wentey. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Carl Wentey. I'd like to double down on the thanks that all that ran, all that campaigned, and all that put themselves out there. I want to say congratulations to the three winners. Thank you in advance for your service. And I also want to fall on my sword and say that I'm remiss and embarrassed for not thanking Trish Monroe earlier when I had the chance on this open forum. I want to thank Trish for her service to this community and what she brought to the table. So, thank you, Trish. Thank you to the new council members. Thank you to the new Mr. Mayor for your willingness to serve this community as of the people, by the people, and for the people is only realized when the people step up. So, thank you all.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for your comments tonight. And again, thanks to all of the people that did step up and run, and for all the people that participated. We got up to about sixty some odd percent. We could do much better than that, as Mr. Whitty pointed out earlier. But certainly, thanks to everybody that did participate. With that, the appointment of Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor is a very important position. It's someone that, as many of you know, we have a thing called the Brown Act here. So, we just can't talk to anybody that we want to. So, the Brown, the bracket allows me to talk to, to one council member. And very frequently, that is the Vice Mayor, who I seek advice and counsel from. So, with that, it's someone that I need to have some experience, is familiar with city operations. And I have, I have had Dr. Carling as a Vice Mayor, and he's very capable. But I would like to, at this point, I would make a motion to have the Vice Mayor as Councilmember Kik. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second. Is there any discussion on, on that motion?
Yes, there is. I'm over here. I don't know how, how y'all are seeing me. Thank you for having, letting me come in virtually. As my, my new council members will know, I have a five-year-old, so sometimes I get all the germs. But I would be happy to serve as the council's Vice Mayor, as long as you can agree to the condition that sometimes my Brown Act buddy might be somebody else, just based on, based on how life goes. But I'd be happy to, to serve our community as Vice Mayor, if that's the will of the council.
Well, and it is also, if, if I cannot participate, that's where I would typically reach out to my Vice Mayor to, to be somewhere where I can. So, I certainly appreciate your willingness to step up. Any further discussion? Call question, please. Roll call.
Fine, yes.
Hi.
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 Hi, thank you. It's unanimous. So, thank you. Vice Mayor Kik, you will be sitting directly here to my right. And with that, a lot of people think that being on the council is just going to two meetings a month. No such luck. There are about thirty-eight different boards, commissions, and agencies where the council represents the city's best interests. So, with that, I would like to propose the following assignments for the members of the council. I have divided them up fairly equally. But this is, these will be responsibilities for these council members and the mayor to represent the city at a number of different agencies, and ranging everything from wastewater disposal to energy, to, to transit. So, a lot of different things. So, with that, I would move the following assignments. Oh, I haven't made any suggestions yet. Okay. Is there any public comment before I make the suggested appointments to the different boards, commissions, and committees? Okay, I will close the public comment period, and I will move that the following council assignments be, be made. Alameda County Transportation Commission, that I appoint myself to that, Mayor Mardesha. However, there is a Parat Transit Advisory and Planning Committee, referred to as PAPCO, and I would recommend Councilmember Bariantos to that committee. The Altamont Landfill Community Monitor, I would recommend Councilmember Bariantos as the member representing the city of Livermore. Altamont Landfill Settlement Agreement Open Space, Councilmember Carling. ABA, the Association of Bay Area Governments. The delegate to that would be Councilmember Branning, and the alternate would be Councilmember Bariantos. The Chamber of Commerce Liaison, Mayor Mardesha, myself. Because he expressed an interest in microgrids and energy, I appointed Councilmember Bariantos to the East Bay Community Joyce Energy Joint Powers Committee. The Government of Livermore Financing Authority, GOLFA, requires that the mayor be the appointee to that, with the, the alternate as the Public Works Directors, that would be Scott Lanfear. Intergovernmental Committee, Councilmember Branning as the initial delegate. The alternate, Councilmember Bariantos. League of California Cities, Councilmember Branning, and the alternate, Councilmember Carling. The Livermore Area Recreation and Park District Liaison, Councilmember Bariantos. Livermore Amter Valley Transit Authority, LAVTA, Councilmember Branning, and Councilmember Kik. Lothma, the Livermore Amter Valley Water Management Authority, Councilmember Carling, and Councilmember Bariantos, and I will be the alternate to that. Livermore Community Arts Council, I will be going back onto that as the delegate, and Councilmember Branning would be the alternate. Livermore Downtown, Inc., Councilmember Branning, and the alternate would be Councilmember Carling. The Livermore Dublin Liaison, two members, myself and Councilmember Bariantos. The Livermore Pleasant and Liaison, myself and Councilmember Carling as the two members. The Livermore Pleasant and Fire Department Joint Powers Authority, two members, myself and Vice Mayor Kik. The Sister Cities Committees, the mayor is the selected delegate for the the three committees, that's Yitzkaido, Cesspool and Nongo, and Shnizins. And for the alternates, Yitzkaido would be Councilmember Branning. For Cesspool and Nongo, Guatemala, Councilmember Bariantos, and Shnizins would be, the alternate would be Councilmember Carling. Stockman's Association Liaison, myself. StopWaste.org, Councilmember Carling, alternate Vice Mayor Kik. There is a Tri-Valley Council Meeting, and all of us are delegates to that. All, all five council members are delegates to the Tri-Valley Council Meeting. When I left that, that quarterly, is that still the case? So, quarterly? Okay, very good. And the Tri-Valley Community Television, the mayor is the delegate to that, and the alternate is the city manager, and so is Ms. Mardesha. The Tri-Valley Council Affordable Housing is Councilmember Carling as the delegate. The alternate would be Councilmember Bariantos. The Tri-Valley San Joaquin Valley Regional Rail Authority, or Valley Link. That, there's no alternates allowed on that, so that's Mayor Mardesha. The Tri-Valley Transportation Commission, Vice Mayor Kik, and alternate Councilmember Bariantos. The Water Roundtable, Councilmember Carling as delegate, and myself as a delegate. Being water chemist, I can hang on to those. And Vice Mayor Kik as the alternate. Zone Seven Liaison, Councilmember Carling, and having been on Zone Seven, myself, two representatives. There are certain appointments that are strictly through the Alameda County Mayor's Conference. And that's the Airport Bandies Commission, Mayor's Conference, and also the East Bay Regional Community Systems Authority. So, those are made through the Mayor's Conference, and those will be later. And so with that, with those suggestions, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Branning. That roll call, please.
Hi.
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 Great, thank you. Now, the appointment of the council members to the City Council Subcommittee on Advisory Bodies. So, we have a number of advisory bodies, from the library to human services. So, we have interviews typically a couple times a year. And what has been the, the facts of the past is we'll typically have one council member that has been on the committee before, and then one council member that hasn't. So, Councilmember Carling just came off of that, so. Yeah? Okay, um, all right.
It was kicking banana.
Kicking banana? Okay, well, in that case, you and Councilmember Branning.
You have to do those, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, moving second, roll call, please.
House member Bariantos.
Hi.
House member Branning.
Hi.
House member Carly.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, council, committee boards, matters initiated. We haven't had any meetings other than this one. Has anybody had any comments that they'd like to say before we close off the meeting?
Unless somebody else wants to.
Councilmember Carling.
Yeah, I, there are a few things that several of us participated in for the last couple of weeks. I guess I'd like to point them out for the community as much as anything. So, several of us were at the ribbon cutting for the reopening of the multi-service center here in the city, and I, I think it's important for the public to, to recognize that the city of Livermore has a number of nonprofit agencies, all housed in one location, which really makes it much easier for folks that need services to go to one place and get multiple services. So, for example, City Served now has their headquarters there, Corilla's there, Access Health, Access Health is there, and so on. So, I think it's important for the public to know that that exists, and the city has recently gone through a upgrade of that particular facility, and it's really very, very nice. And so, we had a ribbon cutting over the last couple of weeks. Also, I want to point out a couple of other things that I think, again, show the quality of what the city is all about, and that is, on the seventh of, of this month, sorry, Councilmember Monroe and I participated in the Citizens Police Academy graduation. And again, this is twenty-four of our, of your fellow residents spent ten weeks with, working with our police department, learning the ins and outs of policing, their policies, procedures, and so on. And I, it's really heartwarming to hear the stories from these folks that have taken time out of their own personal lives to come spend it with, and with our police officers and learn exactly what the police department does in this community to make everybody safe and more secure. Later that day, that evening, on the seventh, again, city staff hosted a housing forum at the Presbyterian Church in, in our community. And again, Paul Spence served as the emcee, if you will, and Josh, Grace, Jake, and Andy did a fabulous job in terms of articulating the housing challenges that we all face and the expectations that the state puts on us in terms of housing. And I guess I'd also like to point out and tell people that Livermore Vine today announced that there's going to be a panel, a panel discussion on the fifteenth of December from two to three. It's virtual, but I guess my point is, is that the city of Livermore participated with some of the other cities in the Tri-Valley. And again, the community wants to learn more about housing, and again, the challenges that we all face. I ask you to, to join Livermore Vine on that panel discussion on the fifteenth of December from two to three. And just an acknowledgement of my own involvement, I've been elected to be President of the Board of Directors of Stop Waste. So, I'll be doing that over the next, it turns out, year and a half. So, that's it for me. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Congratulations on the, on stepping up to President. Yeah.
Would it be appropriate for me to say a quick thank you?
Yes, absolutely.
So, I just wanted to take a brief moment to thank the outgoing council. Really, all of the work we do going forward is built off of the successes and the groundwork that they lay. And so, I appreciate all the work that they have done to really make it so that Livermore is an amazing city, and we have the opportunity incoming to really continue to grow. I want to congratulate my fellows who have just recently been elected as well. It was a very, very passionate race, and I look forward to working with both of you going forward, as well as the current council members. And mostly, I want to thank all of the residents of Livermore, especially the voters who turned out, whether you voted for me or someone else. I very much appreciate your involvement in our civic process. I appreciate everyone in the city. I really look forward to this opportunity to serve all of you. And so, please, reach out, come talk. I'm always here. I'm always here to listen. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for those who showed up here. And I'd like to thank Carol Silva, my campaign manager. It was a blind meeting to blind. And, and I'd like to thank my wife. She did all my seminar reports, whatever those things were. And I'd like to thank people straight down. I, I'm pretty sure I knocked on ninety-five percent of the houses there. And I wore a pair of shoes, pair of pants, and my knuckles. And I got to meet a lot of people, and most of the stuff I put on my flyer were ideas from the people from District Two. And I hope I can not disappoint you, and I know have support for the staff. And the other thing is, when you guys, ladies and gentlemen, put me through that, you know, like fire hose of information, I really appreciate you, and I really like the, the professionalism that you show. And I hope I can help you also in my job. And looking forward to, looking forward with you.
Good, thank you very much.
Before, before you say thank you, John, because I'm sure you, you might, I just need to jump in with my reports. I did have a LAVTA meeting. Nothing exciting, just making sure we could still meet on Zoom. And Carling and the previous council, and I participated in the holiday upgrade, even though it was pouring. So, LDI did a great job pulling everybody together. And despite the, despite the unpleasant weather, there was still a decent crowd that had showed up to support all of the there was still a decent crowd that had showed up to support all of the, all of the families and businesses that put together their floats. And I am so sorry that I'm not there to in-person welcome my new colleagues. But I promise you will appreciate me not sharing, sharing my germs. I'll focus on sharing my ideas when I'm feeling better, and I will give you all a proper congratulations later. Congratulations, and I'm looking forward to working with you.
Great, thank you, Vice Mayor. And with the, to Councilmember Carling's point about the Citizens Police Academy, those folks also very often join our Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association. And we have over a hundred volunteers that volunteer and they give up the most valuable thing that they have, and that's their time to serve this community, and that's something that that makes this a better place to be. I would like to thank the outgoing council members, Mayor Werner, and councilmembers Monroe and Vice Mayor Banano. The tremendous work that all of them did. Mayor Werner, when I, when I was there, he was the best wingman that I could have. He was just so focused, so strategic, and greatly appreciate the council that he was able to provide. And the wonderful stewardship that he provided for this community over the last eleven years, both on council and as mayor. The Climate Action Plan, the Asset Management Plan that has been put in place, the fact that we retired over sixty million dollars in OPEB debt. That's attributed to, to Mayor Werner. The Equity and Inclusion Committee, the tremendous work to, to make that committee inclusive. And that, that stewardship for this community that those outgoing council members provided. Greatly appreciate all of that leadership and all of the, the focus that they provided. I love Livermore. I really do. And I am deeply honored that this community and the voters once again chose me to lead this remarkable community. And now is when the real work begins, where we bring the community back together, where we all have to come together and work together to keep Livermore the remarkable community that it is. And for that, thank you all that worked to get us to this place. The staff does a remarkable job, all the work that's done behind the scenes, all the work that the council puts in. And we've got a remarkable community. That doesn't happen by accident. It happens with very careful planning and focused leadership. So, with that, thank you very much. Thanks for being here tonight. Thank you out there in, in Zoom. And with that, I am going to adjourn this to a regular meeting on Monday, January ninth, twenty twenty-three. One of these days, I'm going to have a meeting in this room. Thank you very much. Join us. We have a reception in the.